All the meeting to order. Stand to salute the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, truly public, which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yeah.
Mr. Lay?
Yeah.
Mayor Lahey?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota. Six present, one absent.
Need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of Lowell School Committee meeting, August 2nd, 2021, and the August 11th, 2021, and to place them in file. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's meeting, I'm going to request that we suspend the rules to take action on a contract to resolve water damage due to an HVAC malfunction at the Pawtucketville Memorial School. Mr. Underwood is here. If the mayor, if you're so kind to suspend the rules, Mr. Underwood is here.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Motion to suspend the rules to bring in a special item. Go ahead, Ms. Superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, can you provide the committee with an update on the situation at Pawtucketville and what this contract will cover?
Sure. Is this working? Okay. So, on Monday morning, we arrived at the school and found that the HVAC system had somehow malfunctioned and cooled the building to the point where we had severe sweating of all the hard surfaces, metal ceilings, block walls. So, we immediately called, started the process of getting a waiver from DCAM through Mike Vaughn and the city, contacted all the appropriate departments, Christine Clancy, you know, and everybody involved. So, an update today, right now, is we just started mobilizing crew there. We hired a professional company to come in. We've got three quotes from certified companies that do this type of work. We also entered into a contract with a hygienist that will give us a clearance once all the work is completed. So, I'm sorry, I ran up here. I've had a lot of things going on here. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. Again, we're going to do a thorough cleaning of that school, just as we did at the high school. We're going to have professionals come in and do it properly. We're going to be transparent in everything we do. We're going to make sure we have a hygienist come in and make sure that the building is safe and ready for occupancy. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has on that.
Let me give a couple of the details. So, this is for a contract with Servpro for $152,000. Current timeline, Mr. Underwood, has us with students in the building on the first day of school with a commitment from the company to remediate any potential issues prior to the start of school. Is that accurate, Mr. Underwood?
That is. We'll be working, starting tomorrow. We mobilized on scene today to isolate that area, set up air scrubbers and dehumidifiers in that space. Starting tomorrow, right around 7:00, we'll have a full crew there. We'll be working 10-hour shifts, Saturday and Sunday, and we have the belief that the company, you know, will have this work done by Monday. We are, though, looking at, you know, possible alternatives in case that doesn't happen. So, we'll be prepared to meet that challenge if that happens.
This is the best of teamwork in action. This problem was identified on Monday morning. You can see we're here on Wednesday evening with a contract for the committee to approve. Thank you to the city for their partnership, and thank you, Mr. Underwood, to you and your staff. The recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is approval as written.
Okay. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. My only question was on the timeline, and that was answered, so I'd be willing to make a motion to approve unless anybody has any other question.
I just had a quick question. Anybody else have a question? Yeah, Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a quick question on the $152,000. Just wondering where that money's going to come from.
This relates to HVAC, and it is certainly Esser-eligible. This is a benefit that the committee has right now, having these funds at your disposal. You previously allocated certain unmarked funds for facility use. We would expect those dollars to be here, right now, so that we can account for this emergency need. I want to make sure I can clarify, Mr. Dillon. We're planning for all types of contingencies as well. If the committee takes this action tonight, it's in the hands of an external vendor. So, we are also planning for all contingencies, but they're committed to a timeframe, and we're going to hold them to that.
Thank you.
Question? Yeah, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. My question to Mr. Underwood is, how long have we had problems with the HVAC system? Or is this a new thing?
It's not a new thing. We have had a little bit of problems with that air conditioning unit running a little excessive right now. But this is not an isolated issue to this community either. We're talking to Servpro and the other vendors. The high humidity and the heat that we've had has really caused problems in several different areas. We do have a, like I said, we have a history from other communities throughout that this has happened in other places because of the high humidity. So, I think it was a mixture of both.
And what about the HVAC, the air conditioning systems at our other schools?
We're currently working on the HVA systems at several schools. We have some good news on a few of them, that we were able to get the Merklin running today. That building hasn't been had air conditioning for a while. We have strong belief that we'll have some good resolutions to the McAvenue and McAuliffe in the next couple of days. So, I mean, we still have a ways to go, but we're working on it continuously every day. We know the heat's coming, and it's staying here for a little while soon.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
So, I spoke with the principal yesterday at the back-to-school event, and I was grateful that he was even there and, you know, able to greet students. But it does sound like everyone really stepped up and jumped into action as soon as this was identified, and obviously, a last-minute curveball that no one could have seen or foreseen coming. And so, I would second the motion to approve and get this work done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. All right. Motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Lay to approve. I didn't hear, did you say that they corrected whatever the balance was that's making the...
Not at this time. Right now, all of the systems are shut down for a couple of reasons. One, we don't want this to happen again with the high humidity. But for the other reason is, we don't want to be blowing any mold that might be in that area throughout the building. So, you know, our containment and everything, so right now, in that wing, everything is shut down.
But when they clean, they're going to clean the ducts and all that stuff, obviously, right?
That is not part of the scope right now. It's to mitigate what we have right now. The thing with mold is, unfortunately, I know a little bit more about mold in the last couple of years than I want to. But mold really, it needs an organic matter to live in. It needs a water source. So, you know, we've got everything dried out right now. We've stopped the water source. And the reason why, it's right now on the block and on the tops of the ceilings, and those areas obviously don't get cleaned like the rest of the building. So, what happens is, the mold will attract itself to that microscopic dirt, and that's what's growing. So, the benefit to that is, it's easily cleaned and wiped. It's not like it's, there's a difference between if we had a flood in a building and things are saturated, and we've got rugs, we've got drywall. This hard surface mold is a totally different type of cleanup, where it can, you know, be easily vacuumed and swept up and then wiped with a mold-resistant or mold-treated cleaning. But right now, first thing we're doing is drying that building out, getting dehumidifiers, and they're getting air scrubbers to kill the microbes that are in the air right now containing that area. So, right now, the duct work is not part of this scope.
So, what are we getting out of the service contract, then?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What are we getting out of the contract?
The contract is a full cleaning of the building, setting up the equipment that's needed to dry the building, dehumify the building, air scrubbers to clean the building. We have personnel, their personnel, that will be cleaning the building from top to bottom in those areas of all hard surface areas. And then, on top of that, we have our crew that's going to go into the areas that are outside that containment, that will start cleaning and treating the rest of the school.
And so, what's the next step, though? I mean, we're going to need the air conditioning back on, so where do we go from there?
I'll be honest with you. Right now, I'm focused on the mold. I have, you know, I've got everything shut down. We'll have a contract, we'll be dealing with, talking with the city on where we go on the HVAC. I wish I had a better answer for that right now, Mayor, but I've really been focused on mitigating what we've got right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota. Six ayes, one absent, approved.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Subcommittee's, Human Resource Labor Relations Subcommittee. Ms. Clark, did we report out on this now?
Thank you, yes. We met, the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee met on Wednesday, August 11th. We were discussing a number of positions that had been presented at an earlier meeting. I'm going to go through them. Some of them will appear later in our agenda for approval. But just to cover at a high level, we did discuss the Lowell High School Strength and Conditioning Coach position stipends. That is going to appear later on the agenda. We also spoke about the, let's see, we had, I'm sorry, but we did have a few recommended changes to the job description, which we are going to see again later on the agenda. Then, we spoke about McKinney-Vento job descriptions. That is going to appear later on the agenda as written. And then, the Community Schools Manager job description was also discussed, and there were some adjustments needed on that. So, that is an update. So, we're going to see these job descriptions later in today's meeting.
Okay.
Some for approval, some with approval with adjustments.
Okay.
So, a report on progress.
All right. Any other comments on the meeting? So, we need to make a recommendation for the change? Okay. So, a new motion to make recommend, to make the recommended changes to the alternative school manager and the approval and approve it. So, motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Are we approving all of these right now? Are we going to have a chance later?
We're going to approve just the changes.
Okay.
The minutes. These are separate job posts that need to be approved.
Yes, can we, can we do that for each one of themselves later?
Now, one second.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, you have these at a later point in the agenda?
I thought it was coming at the end.
Yeah, I don't have any objections. I just, I thought that maybe the votes would come in that part of the, that part of the meeting.
So, we're not...
Just those two. The rest will be at the end of the agenda.
So, the alternative schools?
Yep.
And the schools manager?
Yeah, my apologies. I think I misspoke.
No, I'm sorry.
It's the alternative schools manager position and also the community schools manager position both had edits that we asked for but are also appearing later in the agenda for review and approval. Correct?
They're not at the end.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Superintendent.
I might recommend that you accept Ms. Clark's report as a report of progress. You're then going to discuss each of these at the end. We gave you two options as a committee. You could either bundle them, depending if that's your, that would be item 7.1, if you wanted to bundle them all as one action. Otherwise, they are also broken out for you as individual items under the typical permission to post. So, you're going to see these actually two more times over. So, I would recommend just a simple motion here to accept the report as a report of progress.
But it's not in Section 7, though, right?
You have, there's two here that I'm going to guess, and I appreciate machine gave me the same notes that you're looking at, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to make an assumption here. There's the alternative schools job. The recommendation, I believe, of the subcommittee was to actually include a title change. So, you're going to see it on your agenda listed as 7.6 with the title change. If that's a title change, it's amenable to the committee after that conversation. The conversation of the community schools manager included some items that needs to be discussed. That's pending some discussion with our bargaining unit. Dr. Hall has those, has taken those under consideration, which is why you don't see that right now. There was a recommendation from that subcommittee that required additional discussion. So, that perhaps is what's causing the confusion, but you do have those later on.
All right. So, just a motion to accept the report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Report to the superintendent, school opening. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm proud to say that our block party was an amazing success. Over 3,000 families joined us right outside on the plaza. We are feeling the excitement starting to build for school opening. You know, as we see items show up, as you just heard from Mr. Underwood, our staff is on top of it to make sure that this is a smooth school opening for day one for our students. Mr. Skinner is prepared to share with you a status update, which we'll share with you just as much. Mr. Skinner, if you could, take the committee through an update, and then we will stand for questions.
Good evening. The committee has in your packet an updated slide deck. I don't have access to the slide deck in front of me tonight, but you have, I believe you have it. Interestingly, you received that on Friday, and we realized a big facilities update we had to tell you about was the Pawtucketville School, and that didn't occur until Monday. So, a lot can happen in a few days. The gist of the update, I'm going to take you through, the agenda is to update you on what we call dashboard items that are introduced to you last time, a facilities update, and then just a review of our readiness timeline. So, this dashboard, if you're looking at the slide deck, Slide 4, dashboard is a list of approximately 45 items that we track for readiness to open. They're under a series of categories, curriculum, instructional support, health and safety, students, school buildings and facilities, transportation, and parent and community relations. So, we track a series of elements under each of them. Our relatively simple coding system is that when there's a 1 in the cell, it indicates that it turns green, and we're good to go. If there's a yellow or a number 2, it means that we're working on it, we're ready, we are on track to open school with that item. If the item is coded with a 3, it turns the cell red, indicating that we're not ready to open. I'm happy to tell you that the slide number 6 shows you a more accurate representation of where we are at the moment. All of those elements that you're looking at are red and, excuse me, green and yellow, meaning either completely finished or in process to be finished in time for school opening next week. The dashboard is fluid, deliberately so, and so, the Pawtucketville School might have looked different last Friday than it has done earlier this week. I do have an updated, up to the minute, since before this meeting, version of this slide deck or of this dashboard that I can share with you. I brought with me a hard copy of the most recent updates that I can share with you. This is the slide I'm referring to. I have, as I said, an updated version of this from this afternoon in hard copy to share with you. It's not possible to show the full extent of this spreadsheet on a slide deck, right? And it's difficult to read. Schools are all, virtually all, completely cleaned and in really good shape. I want to pause, if I may, to recognize our custodial staff. We didn't say this previously. It's been the most difficult summer for custodial staff. The buildings have been used for summer programs, CTI programs, more, much more than ever before. And so, custodians have had to work around lots of groups in their buildings and make accommodations for them, and then rush in and get the job done when those groups were finished. Summer school finished at the end of July, and there's been a major rush on. In my visits to school buildings in the last few weeks, the transformation is really wonderful to witness. If I might show you, schools look more like this today in all schools and in the vast majority of spaces in those buildings. Exceptions, of course, with the Pawtucketville Memorial having a challenge and Lowell High School, which I'll talk about in a minute. The cleaning in the schools is in good order. The main thrust of the effort between now and next week is the grounds. So, to beautify the schools, have some curb appeal for each school, and that's the main thrust of the work from now on. So, to beautify the schools, have some curb appeal for each school, and that's the main thrust of the work from now until next week with custo- custodial staff. I want to jump to Lowell High School. Uh, Lowell High School is on track to be ready also. I think you know that there's some significant work going on to remediate the issues that were caused by a flood in the springtime. Um, the vast majorities of classrooms in that area are, will be ready for the opening of school, that are on track to be ready. The contractor tells us, um, there are two rooms, a music room and a chorus room, that will not be ready for another month. We had anticipated that, and there are contingency plans in place for that. I happened to put other schools on this, and the Pawtucketville is the other school I had in mind. You've already had an update on that. Since we spoke last, uh, we've been using this timeline. I've been meeting with Mr. Underwood and his staff weekly, also visual inspection of the schools weekly and coordinating with various others at central office. One feature that's changed since last time, the administrators are back, so I'm very happy that they are. So, I have somebody to talk to and somebody to, um, to trust with an actual, um, onsite report from each building and on various other issues like curriculum items, hiring and so forth. The principals are in contact with me daily, and that helps us to track readiness even more, in more detailed fashion.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I think another update I'm really excited about, we had our new teacher orientation, uh, is happening at the daily school. I was, uh, had the, the good fortune to be able to welcome our new teachers to Lowell Public Schools. Our teachers coming into the district are excited. Our students and families are excited, and our schools are going to be ready. Uh, a big thank you to our city partners, uh, our community partners, our principals, our custodial staff, our teachers, everybody working extremely hard because we are also very excited to finally be able to welcome back 100% of our students on day one. We're looking forward to it. We're excited for it. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we stand for questions.
Any questions from, uh, community members? Ms. Clark?
Not a question. I just wanted to comment that the, um, you know, the energy yesterday at the back-to-school event was really fantastic. Um, all of the students and families that attended, I think, were really, the, um, excited to be there. You could really sense that. And in speaking with a number of the principals and assistant principals, a lot of social workers there, teachers, um, it was just, um, it was energizing and, uh, great to, a great way to feel like we're entering into this new school year, um, you know, starting fresh and talking with principals who are talking about the way that their staff have been working even throughout the summer to marry some of the, you know, the best of last year, um, what they've learned and incorporated into this year, um, as they're planning, um, you know, to just get started and, and, and meet their students where they're at and, um, and bring them forward. So, um, not, not a lot of conversation about what was lost, but really about, this is where we are starting from and, and we're going to go from here, and it's gonna be a great year. So, I just wanted to commend everyone that was involved in planning that and everyone who attended. It was really a very special event, and I look forward to having more of those here in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna add on top of what Ms. Clark was saying about yesterday's event. I've heard that the, the teachers and the principal that were there yesterday were on volunteer. They, they donated that, that, their time for that day event. I'm not sure if that's true, but if that's true, thank you very much. That was a good event, and, uh, thank you for donating that time. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if these questions, if this is appropriate to ask them now, but it seems that in the report, um, it was touched on about staffing, and I'm just wondering, uh, how many vacant positions are still unfilled? Do we know that at this point?
Dr. Hall?
That green button will help.
It's, uh, one or less, uh, per school according to, um, a review we did this week. But I would say approximately, um, 10 to 12, given some last-minute resignations. Or people taking jobs in other districts or within our district, which has caused some last-minute rushes. But it's a typical type of positions, uh, adjustment and, uh, CSA positions that we're always looking for where the shortages are.
So, out of the 10 or 12, how many are teachers? Do you know that? I, I'm just thinking about what happened last fall. We had a whole, I think it was a sixth grade cohort at one school that didn't have any teachers for the start of school. I, I just wanna, I mean, I think the teachers, that all our staff are critical, but I just wanna know, do we know how many unfilled teacher positions we have?
It's definitely under 10. We're, uh, leaps and bounds aware, ahead of where we were last year in regards to that.
I'm sure it's, yeah, it's been, last year was a horrible anomaly, I know.
Very hectic in the last week, uh, last year. It's been much, uh, easier. We've had dozens of people in every day in processing over the last two weeks.
I, I, I didn't hear a number. Do you not know a number? I, I don't know if I'm not hearing you while I-
Sorry, I believe it's under 10. I don't have an exact number.
So, it could be 10 unfilled teaching positions?
Uh, we're confident we're gonna have all those filled by the first day.
Okay, thank you.
I may, Ms. Darney, um, as of Friday last, the majority of schools had no openings. Some schools had one. There were no schools with more than one opening for a teacher, with the possible exception of the high school. Um, this business of tracking and being ready for school is fluid. And so, I met with the principal very early this morning, and she had just received notice of a teacher who's resigning. That's an opening we didn't, hadn't, you know, weren't about to tell you about, but it exists. And so, I hope it doesn't happen that there will be more, but it is a fluid situation, and, uh, we, we still can be confident that the schools will be ready.
I, I appreciate that, and I agree with you. There is a certain amount of ti- you know, fluidity to it, if that's a word. And I, I'm pleased to hear that you're looking at one pers- not like one school with multiple openings, uh, 'cause you, as a former principal, know what that's like if you have classrooms without teachers, and if there are multiple classrooms, y- you're really in a-
With the exception of the high school.
With the exception of the high school. Uh, so, the other thing that kinda jumped out at me that I didn't see here, um, was regarding the student placement issues. Like, when were kindergarten parents notified, uh, regarding placements? And I know, and when you think about what happened last year, many parents chose to keep their children home or sent them to other programs, and most of our kindergarten students were remote for the whole year. So, um, I know it's been a lot of upheaval, but I don't know if my colleagues have been, uh, getting the notices I've gotten, uh, from parents that, you know, that they got placement notice very late, um, and they're scrambling to provide care if they didn't get the school they thought they were gonna get, or student placement issues, um, around siblings being separated. So, I guess my question really is twofold. Uh, when were kindergarten parents notified of placement? Is this something we wanna work at improving, providing parents with more notice? That would be my hope if there, if that is a situation we should look at. And second, um, how many student placement issues are, are still left to be resolved?
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, school committee members. Um, so the kindergarten placement, um, all of the notifications, if students applied before August, um, went out that first week of August. So, everyone who applied, um, at any point in the summer should have received their notification already. So, if they haven't, they definitely should, should reach out, um, regarding their placement.
So, the, the notices to parents went out the first week of August. So, anyone who didn't have information by then should have been, because I think some of the emails, and I don't, I didn't print them out, but some of the information I was hearing was they had a hard time fi- trying to find out. I don't know if people, you know, were calling the Family Resource Center or what, but this sense of, uh, you know, time was running out, and they still didn't know where their child was being placed. So, they went out the first week of August. If they didn't hear, they should have had that information by reaching the Family Resource Center?
That's correct. If they applied during our early registration periods.
Okay.
Um, they, the letters were emailed, so that's another thing. Sometimes you have to check your, your junk or your spam, but, um, that was the primary method of, of communication.
So, the letters were emailed to families. What about families who are, are English language learners, are newcomers? Were they also, um, communicated by email primarily? It wasn't special, um, reach out to those families, or was there?
No, it was primarily in, via email. Um, but in order to, in order to, um, apply, everyone must have an email address. And that's part of when, when we've been working one-on-one with families, um, we've been having to teach them about the email system and sharing with them that that'll be an ongoing, um, commun- communication, um, mechanism with schools. So, even if they're not using email right now, um, we've been showing them, those who come in, we've been showing them how to create an email address, um, how to store your, your password, and, um, and just, again, impressing the importance, pressing upon them the importance of, of keeping updated on the, on the email.
Uh, and that certainly seems like a worthwhile effort to get everybody on email. So, in terms of the number, I'm just trying to get a sense, because, you know, there's, there's a few people, and sometimes it's maybe 10 people who think to email us on the website, but it's, that's like a, it doesn't really give us a full sense of, you know, how much, how many placement issues there are out there, because it's just one group that thinks. And, and often, they're not the English language learners, they're not the newcomers. So, do you have any sense of how many student placement, placement issues are still unresolved? Uh, and, and I'm thinking specifically about one sibling is at one school, the others, you know, those kinds of issues that can be so concerning to a family when they're looking at transportation issues and childcare, things like that.
So, we receive calls every day. Um, we receive walk-ins every day. Um, our staff are working hard to resolve them, um, on a daily basis as they're coming in. So, but, but they are coming in every day for a variety of, for a variety of different reasons.
Sense of the number?
Um, we, we don't have a particular database, so we do have an online, an online form. So, that, you know, obviously is tracked more easily. Um, for phone calls, we have a, like a carbon copy, um, phone log that we keep. Um, but mainly, we're tracking that for completion. I mean, after everyone is settled, uh, we potentially could go back to the carbon copy and, and, um, read through like what all of the calls were regarding and what needed to be resolved. Um, but, other than that, those, and in the walk-ins, we don't track the walk-ins. If we're able to help you on the spot and resolve your matter, it's resolved. But usually, it's if someone calls and someone on the phones has to take a message, that's a tracking mechanism. And then if they submit, um, the online form, that's a tracking mechanism.
Uh, it does seem like it would be a benefit to kinda track it so that we can make progress. You know, see how many misplacements were there and how do we do better next year, things like that. Uh, my only other questions, and I, and I, I will stop, I know I'm, I don't wanna take up all the time. Um, I know in, we got the report about the schools being cleaned, and we have seen outrageous heat this summer, and it just, they said tomorrow's gonna be even worse. And early on, I had asked about window shades and screens, um, because I'd hearing, I had been hearing from staff, like if you've got a south-facing window and that sun is pouring in all day, you know? And we know, as Mr. Underwood mentioned, you know, we have HVAC issues at many of our buildings, and we have had for a while, and many of our buildings don't even have air conditioning. So, do we have an update on whether we have screens or shades? You know, because I felt like that was kinda the low-hanging fruit of some of these facilities upgrades that we needed to do, and I'm just wondering if we have an update on that regarding our facilities?
Dr. Hall?
I don't have all that information with me, uh, tonight, Ms. Darney. I know, uh, the contract's, um, been worked on, but I'd have to email, uh, you and the committee an exact report on what remains to be done.
I'm, I'm sorry. I am having such a hard time hearing you.
I don't, I don't have all that information with me, but I could email that to you, uh, within a day or two. Mr. Underwood already departed, I see.
Well, I just think that that would be good information for the committee and the city to have. You know, we've been working towards this, and here we are, a week from school. We've add, we added a meeting in August so we could get the updated information. I, I, and I realize it's not all gonna be done, it's not all gonna be perfect. We had a lot of catch-up to do, um, because the maintenance hasn't been done through the years. Uh, but I, I just, if, if we could have that information, I, I think, and not, in some more, um, maybe for our next meeting, in some more visible way than just an email to me. Where are we in the process of getting screens and shades for our schools? And as I asked Mr. Underwood earlier, where are we in the process of fixing our HVAC sys- system? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Dillon?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess some of the conversation brings up a good topic of, um, our registration process and maybe, uh, the intent behind, uh, you know, extending, uh, the registration process out over the summer while, you know, the, it might have had good intent. Um, I feel like we owe it to the students that are already in the community to provide them with accurate information earlier in, in the summer. Because, you know, I think maybe we're getting a little bit used to this COVID idea and that everything's gonna happen last minute. And it's just, um, there's a lot of, it seems like a lot of, um, you know, disorganization, I guess, in the process. And I think it's, you know, I mean, we have different, three different registrations and three different, you know, placement periods. Well, you know, that means we're, we're leaving a large portion of the parents and kids, um, that are already in our district all the way to almost the end of the school year to even let them know? You know, even if things are all going well. Um, you know, and if they don't get that message the first week of August, then i- it just causes a backup. So, I think it, it just, um, should be brought up that I think we could clean the whole registration process up. And while people that are late to register, um, you, you know, it's a concern, um, especially with, um, people not familiar with the district and people that don't speak the language, and, but we can do better outreach, um, you know, to get them up to speed, I think, if we just make the registration pro- process more, more clear for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
What was the standard, um, notification timeline for students, you know, three years ago? Is, uh, the first week of August actually seems pretty standard. I, I don't remember receiving information on my daughter's school placement, you know, very, um, very early in the summer. So, I'm just curious.
Do you want, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, do you have that data?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. Uh, so, three years ago, we had an early registration period for lottery. Um, and in the past, we've had four schools that conducted a lottery. And then usually, those schools were notified, um, by June. Um, families were notified by June if they were gonna be in those, those four lottery schools. Again, the only way that your school had a lottery is if you had more applications and seats available. For those schools that didn't have a lottery, students were assigned on a first-come, first-served basis. Um, so I do wanna clarify that this year, there were three points of notifications. The first one was in June. So, anyone who had applied in May or June did get notification at the end of June. There was only one school that was in the position for a lottery, that was the Pine Arts. So, we did fill that school to 75% in June. And then in July, we took a look at everyone who had applied between the first and second period, and everyone got a second notification if they had applied during that point. I believe we had filled the Pine Arts to, um, 85 or 90% at that point. And then the final round was that first week of August where, um, anyone who had any newcomer applicants between July, well, well, the end of June and July were then assigned in August. And so, right now, they're assigned on a first-come, first-served basis.
So, and does that information live? I know this was a new process this year, and I think the, the, what we discussed, the reasons behind it make good sense. So, is that information available on our website anywhere where someone would be able to see, this is when I should have been notified if I fell into that first bucket versus later, applying later?
Mm-hmm. It should be on the website, and we also held an information session at each point. So, anyone who had applied, um, we held a Zoom session, letting families know, um, you know. Again, we only had one lottery school this year, so we let everyone else know that if you applied, you're being placed at your first-choice school and that we were running the lottery for the one school that had more applications than seats available.
It just seems, um, I mean, and may, and maybe I'll look for it on the website, because I do like to, um, you know, be sure that our information is out there, but maybe at certain points in the year, that just becomes something that's more prominent, um, and especially with our-
our, I think, I think the actual collection of email addresses and stressing the importance of that with families who are coming in, and it's so important because it is how we are communicating a lot of our information, and I, I think that's, that's very encouraging to hear that we are in fact now collecting that from everyone. But I think, yeah, if there's a way that we can get additional information up and out there, and especially when people see dates that they can feel like, oh, now I know if I didn't see it in my email, I either need to go and check my spam or my junk folder or reach out. I know the information of the emails that I've been receiving regarding questions, I've actually been forwarding to Dr. Duda at the Family Resource Center, and she is on those emails very quickly, within, you know, if not minutes, hours. And honestly, I've also seen some of those resolve. So I appreciate that the team that is there is really working as issues are being raised. I'm sending them forward, and honestly, there have only been a handful that have made their way to my inbox, and out of the handful I've seen, those have been resolved. So I, I think there's a lot of good work happening. I think there's some additional, obviously, some additional items that are being addressed because of the year last year and our moving of people in schools for fam, you know, different, for different reasons for families last year. But, but I am encouraged by what I'm seeing, and I think, but I think there's always opportunity for, you know, room for improvement, and I think those deadlines and dates, as people become more familiar that this is our process, and having that maybe be displayed more prominently during the summer months on, on some of those front pages, maybe it's in some of the newsletters that even families are receiving through Smore, because I think a lot of our families are engaging that way, as, as folks have, you know, students are in schools, but they might have siblings who are just, you know, getting enrolled, so just some ideas, and I'm sure you've got ideas yourself on how to continue to improve the process. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About four, three, maybe four years ago, I went to, I dropped by at the Family Resource Center and talked to some of the staff, and they complained, you know, that was, that they were busy. So I volunteered about three or four hours a day, about a week, in a Family Resource Center and tried to understand what, why they were, why they were so busy. And what I learned from there was that there were a lot of people who, our city have about 100,000 people, and maybe, you know, 10,000 of them use the Family Resource Center for, for registration. Some of the, the family that came by the Family Resource Center were some, they moved, whether they moved from a different town, or they moved from a different address and didn't get notified, they, they didn't get what they want, they registered for the school that, that the number-one choice, they didn't get their number-one choice or, or whatnot. There were so many different things. It's just that before the school opening, and maybe a couple of weeks after school opening, the Family Resource Center is always in chaos because people change all the time. So I think that's, I don't want to say that that's normal, but I just want to explain to people that, that those are the things that make the Family Resource Center busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Six-two, COVID-19 update. We're going to do the update, and then we'll go to the speakers. Ms. Superintendent?
Yeah, just one last, last message on school opening. One of the events that we did carry forward from last year's opening was our virtual open houses. Those are occurring at every school this week, families. If yours already occurred, all of that information is available on the school website. If yours hasn't occurred, please stay tuned, you're going to have a virtual open house available to all families, all schools throughout the course of this week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a COVID update. We have Mary Ann Bustead, our safety coordinator, with us tonight to share with you the latest updates on our COVID response. The most recent was from the Commissioner's Office this morning. So if you recall, one of the things that we learned within the state of Massachusetts, within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our response at a state level evolves on a daily basis, particularly during the month of August. We were notified today that masks are mandatory in every school facility in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As you may recall, before, previously, the state made a determination to say, if you are not in person, the day would not count towards student learning time. Added to the student learning time calculation now is also the provision that we are going to have to attest to the state that we are requiring masks in our schools. The committee already took that action. We are required via survey that we will be completing, Miss Bustead will be completing as soon as it goes live. We are prepared to do that. We have been notified this morning. So we'll continue to update you and as we learn the new requirements from the state, and Ms. Bustead's going to share with you the current status of those requirements and our readiness for school opening in a safe manner here in 2021. Ms. Bustead?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent, school committee members. I'm here to update you on all of the latest and greatest information regarding COVID. A lot of things have changed this year for the better, and it's a little bit more robust, the testing, so I'm going to talk about that a little bit. But I want to start with just showing you some of the things I want to talk about tonight, are the school acceptance that we received, some expectations, the testing model, some of the protocols this year which are different, the COVID updated symptoms, our next steps, and what's coming up. So the first thing is the acceptance application that we applied this week to do the, do the testing, and we did get accepted, and there's a whole team of people that will be supporting us from CIC Health, and this is just a copy of the acceptance letter. The next thing I think is really important is that, make sure that we're all on the same page, is that, as you know, students are expected to be in school full-time, five days a week, and all of the health and safety requirements previously issued by DESI have been lifted, including no requirements for social distancing. So that's, that's big, that's new, that's different. Per the City of Lowell and the Lowell School Committee, and now DESI, masks are required indoors at all times except during breaks and when eating or drinking or by medical exemption or behavioral exemption. So that still applies as it did last year. One of the phrases that we are changing this year because the testing is much more robust is that we are talking about COVID safety checks and a, a testing, it's more of a testing package. And we also need to continue to maintain ventilation upgrades, continue hand hygiene practices, and students and staff should definitely stay home when they're sick. So these are the testing services, and this is really the newest information that we have on COVID testing. So I'm going to just briefly go through this because I think it's important for people to know and understand how this is going to work this year. The whole premise for all of this testing this year is that we want to keep students and we want to keep staff in school. So because of that, we have all this additional testing that we didn't have last year, and we're really trying to keep everyone in school. So the first one is the symptomatic testing, is that when individuals, whether it be a student or a staff member, is at school and they have some of the COVID symptoms, they can go to the nurse and they will be tested on the spot if they consent to testing. That's a big, important piece of this, they have to have consented to testing. And obviously, if you're having symptoms and you're not feeling well at home, you shouldn't come to school at all. But sometimes things come on when you're at school, you can go to the nurse's office. If you are consented to test, you can test right away. If you are, that's a big question that's come up, is that what happens if a student goes to the nurse or a staff member goes to the nurse and they're not feeling well and they want to get tested? They have to consent, so we have to call home, and the parent will have to fill out the consent form to get tested. So that's going to be important because we, I'm sure most parents want to keep their students in school. I'm assuming that, that many will consent if they haven't already at that point in time. Samples are collected at school using the Binax Now rapid antigen tests, we'll know in 15 minutes, and any students that are testing negative and they have mild symptoms can stay in school. So that's the first one, symptomatic testing, same, whether it be staff members or students. The next one that is different is called test and stay, and that's the close contact testing. When individuals are identified as close contacts to a COVID-19 positive individual at school, then if they agree to, parents have agreed to have them tested, we will test them for at least five days in a row. So we'll test them that day, and then each day for five days in a row, potentially, it could be six days, depending on how the student's feeling. And if they are negative, they can stay in school. And obviously, if they're positive, their parent will have to be called and they'll have to go home. I think that this is the biggest difference this year, is that instead of having our close contacts all immediately having to go home, they can stay and they can get tested, and if they're negative, they, they just stay in school. I'm excited about that. I, I think that's going to make a huge difference. And the last one is the routine COVID pool testing, which is what we were part of last year, where we tested every week. The only difference this year with the routine testing is that last year, we did the pools, and there were up to 10 students, or staff members were part of those pools as well. The difference this year is that we're going to be doing this dual testing, where we go into a school and we fill a pool with 10 swabs, and we also do 10 individual swabs. So we're doing sort of twice the work, but the reason for that is before, we would send the pool in, and if a positive was identified, then the next day, we would have to retest all of those students again and wait and find out who the positive was. So now what happens if they're in at the Broad Institute, they're testing at midnight sometime, and they all of a sudden see there's a positive pool, they'll pull up those 10 individual pools right on the spot, test them, we'll know by the next morning who that positive individual is. So that's, that is also very different than what it was in the past. So we're going to get a lot quicker results and identify the positives a lot faster. Keeping in mind, towards the end of the year, we didn't have a lot of positives that, you know, I don't know what that's going to look like this year since we're going to have all the students in school, but I think that this is a big win for us, that we're going to be doing this dual testing and, and getting results a lot faster. So the two testing models that I just described, one is the diagnostic, which is the test and stay, and then the symptomatic testing. And then the last one is the routine pool testing, which I just described. Some of the protocols, I took these out of some of the paperwork from DESI. There's a lot of information coming at us all at the same time, but I thought these were the most important things that you should know. The new test and stay program will allow those asymptomatic close contacts to remain in school. They'll be able to participate in sports, excuse me, in extracurriculars, as long as they take the rapid antigen test daily, wear the ma, wear their mask, and follow all the guidelines. If a district does not have test and stay available, that doesn't apply to us, or an individual family or an individual chooses not to participate, then they'll have to follow the regular guidelines and they'll have to quarantine for seven days. So for instance, if, you know, someone's not feeling well, they go to the nurse's office, the nurse asks them if they're, they consented, they said, no, do you want to? No, then they will have to go home and quarantine for that period of time. And that's going to be a choice of the individual and the parents. There are some close contacts who do not need to participate in testing and quarantine protocols. This is, this is very different. This has been updated since last year. This is a big one, is that all the individuals on school buses, when they are masked and windows are open, regardless of their distance, they do not have to be quarantined. So that's, that's really, if there's a close contact on the bus. So if there's, if they're wearing their mask and the windows are open, regardless of how close they are to each other, they will not need to participate in quarantine per the protocols. Also, some other groups, vaccinated close contacts won't need to quarantine, classroom contacts spaced at least three feet apart will not need to quarantine. So we've had a couple of situations lately. There's been a couple of positives in the last week, and the people were more than three feet away, everyone had their masks on, so there's no close, close contacts. It's only if you're three feet or less and you are together for 15 minutes or more. So it's really the three feet is the big difference. Last year, it was six feet. Some additional protocols, the symptoms list has been updated a little bit, I'm going to show that in one minute. In terms of the district and schools, may continue to test students with mild symptoms with the Binax Now. So right now, we're ordering many, many Binax tests for every school is going to receive boxes of Binax tests, so they will be prepared if students or staff come and they're not feeling well and they want, and they're consented to test, we will test them right away, we're prepared to do that. The weekly pool testing remains strongly recommended, especially for unvaccinated individuals. That was a project I worked a lot on today. So far, we've gotten out notices to families, and we have about 300 students, basically in one day, that have already, have consented to testing, and we have a number of staff members, and that's changing as we speak. So those messages have got, just really gotten out in the last day or so. As we noted last year, if a student tests positive or presents COVID symptoms during the day, they, they should be masked. This is when it wasn't a mandate, and when feasible, they should be put in a separate room with a closed door so they can be picked up. Last year, we used to, we had that medical waiting room. This year, many schools need to use that space, so each school has to identify what their protocol is going to be, if there is a COVID positive, where they're going to place that person until they can be picked up. The symptoms, these are basically the same as they were before, but they've really made a big promotion saying those last five or so symptoms, they really need to be in combination with other symptoms. And for instance, a big one right now, which I have, is days of congestion, runny nose, it's that time of year for allergies, and as the health department always said to me, is not everything is COVID. So if someone is congested, they don't necessarily have COVID, but if they are running a fever and have some of those other top symptoms, they may, they may have COVID. So if someone goes to the nurse's office and they have any of these, especially the top symptoms, they should definitely get tested for COVID, whether they do that in the nurse's office, or they go to Colley Stadium, they can go there and, and a bunch of other places. Some immediate next steps is that we have sent out parent information about these new testing models, and I know one question that comes up a lot is, do parents have to consent to all three testing modes? Yes. There's not separate consents for each one of those testing modes, they have to consent to all three. So the student consent form is out, there's parent and caregiver materials available on our dashboard. The dashboard's been updated with all of the newest information on it, and schools are working right now on how they're going to set up their testing, their pool testing within their school, and we're working on a communication to all of staff. And then lastly, we are projected to start pool testing the day after Labor Day, so would be pool testing Tuesday through Thursday that week. That's our projection right now. We don't have all the supplies and we don't have everything we need, but they have assured us that we should be getting all of our shipments next week. So, you know, that's our, that's our plan that we start after Labor Day. We'll be testing three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, except for when there's holidays. I will be working very closely with the CIC coordinator that they're going, that they've assigned to me to work with, to help, because this is, this is, this is a heavy lift, especially at the beginning, getting everything set up. So I'm, I'm on the phone with CIC people, feels like it's all day long right now, but hopefully that will die down as we get everything set up. We do have vaccine clinics available for schools. Right now, we have three schools that have asked for vaccine clinics so far, and we are working with the health department to get those set up, but we're going to keep offering that to schools to encourage students and staff to get vaccinated. The testing dashboard, like I said, is up, and we will be, all principals will be reporting from their schools every time there's a COVID positive. We have a reporting form, and that's how we know how mu, how much is happening in each of the schools on a weekly, well, daily basis, and then I report that out here, as I did last year, on the dashboard. I, I, there's a lot more to this, but I feel like I gave you a synopsis. I, I, there's a lot more to this, but I feel like I gave you a synopsis. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
If I could just, if I could just to thank Ms. Busted and an emphasis for families. I had a family, uh, send in a request for remote learning on a very official looking form. It happened to be a form from Lowell, Michigan. Lowell Public Schools, Lowell, Massachusetts, it's 100% in-person learning. There is not a remote learning option. That's via state requirement. Uh, we are abiding by every state requirement to ensure that we have 100% in-person learning, which is the commitment of this committee. So families, you're gonna hear me say this multiple times over until we get to August 31st. Unfortunately, there is no remote learning option in Lowell. Uh, if you're requesting remote learning, you're only able to do that via the Commonwealth Virtual Charter Schools or requesting homebound uh, or home education, which you'll see up come up in later in the agenda as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Busted, for the, for the update. I appreciate it. Tiny question, just in terms of consent, that's not a per incident's consent, correct? Like a, a parent will consent for their child to be tested? They don't have to redo it every time?
No.
They have some?
No, it's a, it's a one-time consent. As a matter of fact, thank you for that question. We did have all the consents last year, but we were not allowed to roll them over this year. We had to start new because there's so many di- different testing models. They changed the consent form. Um, so we had to start from scratch. But once you consent, you're consented and if, if somebody changes their mind, it's very easy for me to pull them off if, if there's an issue.
Any other questions? Ms. Clark?
I just wanna point out, it was very easy to find this information right on the homepage of Lowell Public Schools website under Parents and Students and the COVID dashboard is the first option there. And then the consent form, all the information actually you've gone over, which is really helpful to know that that's, that's where folks can find, um, if they have any questions about the symptoms, the testing itself. And then the consent form brings you to another website where you're, it automatically populates Lowell and you're picking your school and then you're gonna fill in the information for your student. But that was really easy to find, easy to do. Please, families, consent. And I hope that we're just including this in all of our back-to-school information, smore newsletter. I, I, I've heard people talking about it already, so I think this is, this is great.
Yes, I, I know that the principals are sending information out and, um, really encouraging families. And that would be the, one of the last things I would say is that in order for us to really keep everyone in school, I think the more people that consent to these different testing modes, the better for all of us, that we can keep our students in school and keep moving along, keeping our staff in school as well, keeping everyone safe.
All set. Ms. Yarde and then Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for that very comprehensive report. You answered all my questions, so that was great. Um, and I think that, I agree with you that the consent to test is huge in order, and I think the fact that they're saying, if you, um, if you don't test, then you have to quarantine, may help more people to make that decision to be tested. Uh, my question, and I don't know if this is really more directed to you or one of the, maybe Dr. Hall, is regarding the, the masks. And I know we did a lot of work around ventilation, that each classroom would have, uh, air purifiers. Have we expanded that now that we're going to full in-person? I know the requirements may have changed, but will every classroom have a puri- a purifier, an air purifier?
Dr. Hall?
Not necessarily. I believe the previous policy was that an interior classroom without a working window would have a air purifier. So, uh, we still do have, uh, those air purifiers from last year that will be in operation, but not every single, uh, classroom in the district will have an air purifier.
So if it's a class that has a window, maybe that might not have an air purifier?
Uh, correct. That's what should be happening.
And do we have, with the PPE equipment, I know we ordered a huge amount in the beginning of the year and then we ended up being mostly remote. So do we still have a good supply of masks that we'll be able to provide, especially for the children, where I've heard the smaller ones are more protective for them? Do we have that in stock?
Uh, yes, we, we were about two weeks ahead of the power curve on that. Dr. Boyd, I think, uh, sensed that they were going to, uh, mandate masks. So Mr. Underwood, um, got out ahead of it before everyone else ordered them, but I believe we got about 200,000, um, small child masks in before the mandate came into fruition. So we got really lucky with that.
Excellent. And then my final question is, um, I've had a couple of people who have problems with the masks, right? And, um, this is one I purchased where you can see the lips through the plastic, uh, because it helps me with my hearing impairment if I, but I couldn't get my own family to wear them. But my question is, have we thought about these specialized masks for maybe hearing impaired people or people who are doing, uh, working with speech language pathologists where you really need to see the teach, the teacher's lips, even first grade teachers, when you think about, they're teaching reading and if the child can't see the lips, I think it really puts them at a disadvantage. So I'm just wondering, have we as a district looked into some of these alternate masks that might be helpful for some of our, um, special need situations?
Yes, we do have some specialized masks that were requested. I can't remember the instance now, but we, Mr. Underwood looked into it and ordered those, but I don't think we've, um, looked into the, uh, clear ones. But, you know, that is an interesting idea. We'll get some prices on those.
I think it would be important for those people that could benefit for them. Thank you.
There is a series of guidance, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. There's a series of guidance from the state now that they're mandating masks. Every, every series of, uh, recommendations that came from the state, we have been on top of. There's only one exception, uh, committee member Dougherty, which you remember when we established our policy, there's two options from the state in terms of activities that require use of mouth, uh, blowing a horn, for instance. The state gives you two options. In our policy, we're opting in the option where kids are not gonna wear masks when they're playing a musical instrument, but apparently there's musical instrument playing masks now. Uh, we're not planning to order those unless the committee so chooses to update its policy. So outside of that particular, uh, protocol, every other guidance within the state's protocol, we're out in front of and ahead of.
Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. Um, man, what are we doing? I, I mean, uh, it's a nice thought to, you know, come up with a mask that you can see through, but it's impossible. We're talking about putting plastic over our kids' mouths. This is the conversation that we're having right now. It sounds insane. I have way too many questions to let the speakers, uh, you know, wait any longer. So can we have more conversation after on the topic? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Why don't we have the, Ms. Clark, want to read the, uh, registered speakers?
Please state your name and your address when you come to the podium. Chris Mercurio.
Name's Chris Mercurio. Did you say's address?
Yeah, just name and address, thanks.
34 Walnut Street, Lowell. I'm a parent of a 10-year-old. I'm gonna give you some facts to start off. The survival rate for children who get COVID is 99.997%. I did the math. That means kids have a better chance of getting struck by lightning than they do of dying from COVID. That's a fact. They have a better chance of getting hit by a car three separate times in their lifetime than they do from dying from COVID, but you're forcing them to wear masks on their face. Another, here is another fact. Forty-plus studies proving that masks are ineffective against any virus. Thirty-plus studies proving masks are dangerous and can actually be the cause or reason for someone's sickness. I'm gonna give you two definitions. Torture, the deliberate infliction of severe pain or suffering, and suffer is to submit to or be forced to endure. To be honest, no human has the right to force another human to wear a mask on their face. Now, remember from the definition of torture, powerless victim. To me, an adult is not a powerless victim. So if you want to continue being ignorant to the facts, I am all for your freedom to wear a mask. When you know the facts and choose to ignore them, then force a child or a powerless victim to comply with your ignorance, which leads to their suffering, that is textbook torture and tyranny. All you have to do is make masks and testing optional and everyone is free to live the life as they see fit. That's our most fundamental right and that's how life is supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one.
Danielle Maseo, 642 East Merrimack Street. I'm the mother to two children. My oldest is 16 and she's a junior at The Voke, while my youngest is six years old and entering first grade. His name is Michael and he has a neurological condition called speech praxia. He's gonna have that for the rest of his life. Michael began to speak when he was almost four years old, after I was told that he may never speak. He made great strides. I was with him every step of the way. I had him in private speech therapy from the age of two on, as well as working with early intervention Michael was trained to wa- from the age of two to watch your mouth move so he can learn how to articulate the words properly. Do you know where Michael is right now? Do you know how he's doing right now? As his mother, I'm having difficulty understanding him now because of the regression. He had a lapse of services during the shutdown. I was very understanding, I feel. Then last year, at the end of the school year, we have suddenly group speech therapy with ESL students. That's not helpful. Speech praxia is only ever appropriately treated if, with another child, if that other child is at the exact same phonological level as my child, which is basically saying it's impossible. It's just not a thing. Where to begin? So mandates. DESI has five main purposes. One, DESI sets the framework for curriculum instruction and assessment. Two, aids educators in professional development. Three, supports some social and emotional health and safety. Four, helps low-performing districts. And five, collects data and research for proper funding allotments. I didn't hear anywhere in there that they are authorized to make any type of health-related mandates on my child. Nowhere. There is not a public health emergency. There is not a state of emergency. All of those ended. Therefore, reality here, it's not enforceable. DESI is not authorized to make that mandate. It's just, it's not a thing. And mandates outlawed anyways. But, we're moving on here. During the back-to-school Zoom meeting, parents were informed of the district's generosity in supplying every teacher as well as paraprofessional with a new laptop, as well as the implementation of new interactive smart panels to be used throughout the schools. How wonderful that is. Thrilled. Is there anyone here who cares to explain to me why the district made the decision to not address the existing concern that there isn't air conditioning in the majority of these school buildings? Yet you want my child to go into your, into the school building, mind you, we pay tax dollars to pay for, wearing a piece of cloth covering his face in this ki- in that kind of heat while we sit here in a nicely air-conditioned building? That is unacceptable. It's child abuse. It's what it is. There's no short way around it. What we are asking, what you're asking from us is nothing short of child abuse. I won't do it. And what is the district going to do about that? Because he's not going to wear a mask. I assure you of it. It's not happening. Enough is enough. Your office has some disorganization regarding what's going on with who, where, what, when, etc. I just got a call last night stating that I was being welcomed to the STEM Academy while my son attends the Riley. Hmm. Well, I thought maybe that's a fluke, but no, I opened my emails to find the same. So I called that ever-so-pleasant Rebecca Duda and she very curtly told me that she would do what she could to get Michael back to the Riley. Michael's up for his IEP three-year review this year in September. It's already, you know, we've already got a date and everything, so I guess I'm lucky because she was able to get him back in. I got a call this morning. I asked who, what about teacher, what teacher assignment he might have. I was told that I could call the school and find all of that out, although when I had tried calling the school previously, because I've not received a stitch of information at all. I've gotten nothing about back-to-school. Not a thing. Michael's been in this district since he was three years old, so it's not as if we're a new family. We've been here. I mean, this is unacceptable. Uh, here we are with what, less than a week? I don't know who his teacher is. I would love to know how his services are planning to be implemented because it's not acceptable. These children who have IEPs, who have speech, it's not a delay, it's a disorder. Big difference right there. They cannot have speech services via Zoom or in group settings. I mean, I feel like I have to nitpick this IEP to pieces now because of anything that might sneakily happen. And I don't wanna feel this way. I feel, I feel beyond angry and disappointed. I don't feel like I should be second guessing bringing my son, whether my son should go to first grade or not, or whether I should homeschool him. A background on me, I'm an early childhood educator. I have been for over 16 years. I'm also a volunteer with the Federation for Children with Special Needs, work, working with advocacy for children who are in foster care and have IEPs. I'm not uneducated. I know what I'm talking about. This has got to stop. You all, this is gonna be talked about in history. No one's gonna talk about the person who made the recommendation. They're gonna talk about the people who tried to put these mandates in place, and that's you. That's all of you, with the exception of one person. Is that what you wanna be remembered for, the person who tried to muffle children? Stifle their learning? I'm not sure how you're putting your heads on the pillows at night. I really am not. There's got to be some point where you say, you know what, I'm not gonna do that.
Thank you.
I wish I could say thanks back.
Kristen Seer.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Andrew Chabak. My son's a junior at Lowell High. I live at 204 Wentworth Avenue. I'm speaking tonight not only for my son, but future generations. George Orwell, author of the famous Animal Farm in 1984, once said, "If liberty means anything at all, it means the right to tell people what they do not want to hear." Benjamin Franklin said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Thomas Jefferson once said, "He who gives up his freedom for safety gets none of them." As a parent, I'm not here tonight to argue about who's right, about who's wrong. I'm simply here tonight to speak about personal choices. As a parent, I'm not comfortable at all with my child wearing a mask all day to school. There are so many negative effects that can happen and too many, I can't go into them all. But we as parents need to make a choice, not DESI. This is simply not right. This is our right as Americans. Wear the mask if you want. Might say not to wear it, but we have a choice not to wear one as well. The other day, a nine-to-one boat came across by DESI for our children. This is not logical and simply unfair. What happened? Where's our notification? With this decision to mandate indoor mask mandates until October 1st, the opinion of the, of DESI has been made the edict of all the public school departments, of the entire com- of the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is simply crazy. Crazy. I have a question. Do you think the magic date of October 1st is going to cause problems? I do. I really do. And I think you do, you probably do too. Because if 80% of the children are vaccinated, the unvaccinated will not have to wear a mask, but the unvaccinated will. That's simply insanity. Talk about segregation. Talk about coercion. Talk about peer pressure. This is insanity beyond comprehension. Peer pressure is not a good thing, and our children are being used because of this mask mandate. This is not only a cause of division among peers, but it will also be a cause of division among families. What if our children don't want to wear masks? What if the parents don't want them to wear masks? This needs to be a personal choice of liberty, and wearing a mask needs to be optional. But if a child wants to wear a mask, that is fine. Wear the mask. That's what liberty is about. Forcing the wearing of masks is not a liberty, nor do I believe. It is about safety. My belief is that this simply just makes one feel safe. Feel safe. Again, if a child wants to wear a mask, that is fine, but mine shouldn't be forced to wear one. But why are we enforcing this for all of our children? This simply doesn't make any sense. On a side note, I know if we all cave to this insanity by allowing our children to be masked, it will lead to mandating the vaccine next. And I'm not here to talk about that. But why? Because if you give an inch, they're going to take a mile. And this is just the start. First is the masks, then it's the shot. We are living in the United States of America, people, under one nation. One nation under God. The last time I checked, the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, and the Constitution are still valid documents. We all have the right to wear a mask, but we also have a right not to wear the mask. The last I checked, our recommendations, the recommendations from the CDC are just that. Recommendations. We, as Americans, live in a constitutional republic. A constitutional republic, according to reference.com, means the majority, the major difference between a constitutional republic and a democracy is that in a democracy, all laws and legislation are decided by a popular vote. And in a constitutional republic, the elected officials decide on legislation as representatives of the people. And by the way, on a side note, the CDC is not the governing agency of the United States of America. Neither is Fauci. I believe that this mask mandate is all about fear, which has led to government control for a virus. It has a 96, 99.9% cure rate with no end in sight. And that's total insanity? Total insanity. I ask the city manager, Superintendent Boyd, please do not comply with this mandate. Please. Masks should be optional. Thank you.
Can you just wrap up and not yell? We can understand you better. I know you're not... I know you're passionate, but just talk regular. Who's next?
Desiree Roy. Joanne Muse.
Your Honor, Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm here because I am a nurse of 49 years. I have always been an advocate for patients. And the reason being is because I know doctors, nurses, lawyers, all people from all walks of life are not always looking out for other people's interests. I have to tell you, wearing the masks, you are breathing in your own carbon dioxide. Your blue masks that you're wearing come from China. Same place where SARS and COVID came from. Your testing that you're talking about has E O on the container, which is ethylene oxide, which is a carcinogen. Causes cancer. It's a lawsuit down the road. So be careful. I want to tell you some of the side effects from COVID. I've taken care of people with it. I've had it. First of all, there's fatigue. There's mental fog. There is skin irritations, which I've seen. Rashes increasing. There is, you can get a dry eye from blowing out air all over your face. That does occur in probably people that are older. It dampens, as you had previously said. People cannot hear. It diminishes the sound. Dirty masks, which I'm sure kids are going to wear because they're not going to change them all the time as they should, is going to transmit viruses. You're breathing in your own germs. You're breathing in your own carbon dioxide. It's not good. Sometimes you can reach the toxic levels. You need to maintain a pH balance in your system. You're breathing carbon dioxide back into your lungs that you've already breathed out is not good. The masks do give, I agree with you, a false sense of security. There is no proof, no scientific proof, that they prevent anything. The viruses are so tiny, they'll go right through and around the mask. Even the I-95 ones that they're talking about, the N-95, I'm sorry. We don't know what the health and psychological effects are going to do to children down the road, the generations to come. They're living in fear. You're teaching them that. They're living in division. You're teaching them that. For people that don't want to wear a mask. And it really is dividing people. I think it doesn't... It takes away from our God-given rights to choose. It takes away from our ability to reason. And it's not good. The decisions we make for our children affect our children. And how do we know that they've given us the correct information? We all know that 99% of our public servants, politicians, whatever, are serving their own interest, not for the people. We know that. We've seen that over the years. So how do you know we're getting the correct information about COVID, about masks? It's debatable. And I don't trust the CDC. They funded Wuhan Labs. And also Pfizer and Glasgow-Clive-Smith own the Wuhan Labs. So Pfizer is going to push their vaccine because they're making lots of money. And then they're giving boosters over and over again. And I have seen a lot of the effects from that. Not pretty. I think that... I think that the American Medical Association has already come out with a warning saying that masks should not be worn by healthy people. There is no scientific evidence in preventing the viruses. The CDC, they directed states to wear them, but they also came out saying that vaccinated people don't carry the virus. Then they changed that and said they do carry the virus. So who do you believe? Who do you believe? I think, as parents, you need to seek the truth. You need to do due diligence in your own research for your own children. Because if you don't, you're not doing them any favors. I believe, as you do, that God gave us freedom. I believe it's our God-given right. And I believe that we should do right and seek the truth, not just be sheep led to slaughter. Because you're right. This will happen. They will force the vaccine. In Australia, they're kidnapping the children and vaccinating them. A lot of the information you won't find on mainstream. But I will say, I ask God to bless your decisions. I ask Him to guide you to do what's best for children. I thank you. Good night.
Thank you. That's the speakers. Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to applaud anybody who came and spoke tonight because it takes guts to do that. Because, you know, you're going to face the backlash of the population that is still scared of this whole thing. So congratulations to those people for stepping up. You know, going back to what we were talking about before, the speakers, I mean, we've got ourselves so twisted up inside of our own heads trying to put on a show as decision-makers here. I mean, we're talking about putting plastic covers across our face. This is the point that we've gotten to. I can't believe that it doesn't sound silly to everybody else. It's hard to believe that. Everything that we're doing here is a show with all this mask mandate stuff. We were only a week and a half ago in meetings, having meetings all the time. Nobody said a word about a mask. We didn't get any requests that people wear masks. Everybody in this room was comfortable being within close quarters of each other. And now, all of a sudden, this mandate comes through, and everybody's masking up. And, you know, even asking to go back to some of the rules that we had before. I mean, just absolute insanity. Do we have numbers on how many patients are being treated right now at LGS, LGH, excuse me, for COVID or with COVID symptoms? I don't think we have any handy because we stopped taking account for any of those type of numbers, hospitalizations and deaths. What is the death number right now? The mortality rate for the city of Lowell? I don't see the bodies piling up. I checked, well, the information that I got from Lowell General Hospital is an estimated of 10, an estimate of 10 patients right now. Doesn't sound like they're being overwhelmed. Not even close. I don't think there's been overflow out of Lowell General Hospital for the entirety of this whole thing. Those are the only statistics that matter. Hospitalization and death. That's hard for people to think about. But cases? Everybody's going to get this virus, whether you like it or not. We can't continue to hide from it. And counting cases and also testing our kids all the time, this doesn't affect kids. Not nearly as much as the regular flu or any other flu strain that's come through. We've never talked about masking in the past. It's never once come up. What are we doing? Makes zero sense. The numbers haven't changed. 99.999, you know, for kids. Anybody that we have to be concerned about within our buildings. Teachers have been offered the vaccination. If they want it, that's great. Might help them with symptoms. Kids are not in danger. Who decides in school what symptoms will... I mean, are we just having teachers decide when a child has symptoms and sending them for testing? Do we have any, do we know? Is it ultimately up to the nurse in the building? Is that right? How could we possibly... So now we're going to have teachers making decisions on, you know, whether this kid has symptoms that should relegate them to the nurse, for the nurse to evaluate them on those symptoms? And as of right now, with a mask on? And so, how's that going to work? More learning loss? We're going to keep pulling kids out of class for sniffles? And don't, I mean, we haven't even, I haven't even talked about testing. There's no reason that we should have any kid out of the building at this point. For any reason, except serious illness. And the kids don't get seriously ill from this. It's nuts. We need to grow, we need to get some guts. How can we continue to listen to these policymakers from DESI? Think about how, think about six months ago, when we were banging our heads on the desks because DESI didn't give us the information that we needed. They didn't give us any guidance. They didn't have any material, you know... They didn't help us whatsoever throughout this whole thing. And they've been making the wrong decisions the whole time. CDC, the whole bunch of them. It's absolute insanity. We can't continue to allow other people to make decisions for us. It just doesn't make any sense. And, you know, we are, man, we're just cowering to, I don't know what it is, try to get votes or something? I mean, try and keep, you know, keep yourself in this seat? There's absolutely no guts here. It's sad, and I can't believe. I mean, we were talking about putting plastic covers on kids' faces tonight, and nobody realizes it yet. I apologize to anybody in the administration that feels like I'm talking directly to them because I'm not. But as a whole, we need to, we need to think rationally. And there's just zero rational thought behind it. Have we had a conversation with the manager at all on her opinion on easing restrictions in the schools slightly? Has there even been any talk? Probably not, I guess, because we just decided last week that we didn't have to.
Well, she makes, she's running the...
I understand. I'm not questioning her decision at all. But if, can we have a conversation with her and say, "Hey, there may be instances where, you know, do we have to 100% abide by this city buildings?" I mean, schools are different buildings. You know, and for us to just take that as city buildings or, you know, have mask requirements and just think that the manager is demanding that on us, then, you know, I think maybe we need to have a conversation, particularly around physical activity. How can we honestly say that we're doing what's best for kids if we're not going to allow them to exercise indoors unless they have a mask on their face? It's absurd. It's absurd. And I think we need to have a conversation with the manager about that because we don't even know what, we don't even know what her opinion is on it, I guess, at this point. The other thing is, how do we enforce it? Who is going to tell a teacher? Who's going to tell a student that they have to wear a mask? Is it, is the principal going to have to deal with all that crap starting here at the beginning of school? Because I've heard from a lot of teachers, I mean, a lot of parents, including myself, that I'm not going to allow their kid to wear a mask in a building. Are we ready to handle that? I don't think we are. Takes a large, large amount of authority to instill a mandate like this on an entire population. And it is a scary thought that we're trying to do that. Takes an incredible amount of authority. It's tyrannical. I ask for answers on those questions on what repercussions are. If anybody has any comment from the administration or Mr. Mayor, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else on the committee? Mr. Superintendent, any thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will be following our code of conduct. There's a progressive process that includes from conversing with the parent to warnings to all the way through progressive discipline. All of our schools, we follow in those. Same as what we did in the spring. We found those steps to be quite effective in the spring. Right now, what we'll be moving from is approximately 50% of our students that were in-person in the spring to 100% here in the fall. So that's a difference. But this policy will be largely the same as what we experienced in the spring. And we found significant compliance in the spring. So I'm hopeful. And I would say I'm confident that our principals are equipped to work through it. But certainly, we're going to, it's going to require the partnership of our families.
Mr. Dillon?
So there's no good answer. And we're going to stick it on the principals to deal with this on day one with enough headaches for the principals already. And so our answer is, we're going to, for completely irrational reasons, we're putting on a show here, putting our masks back on, playing the game. And with no logic whatsoever, we're going to start imposing discipline sanctions on a child and possibly taking learning time away from them based on no logic whatsoever. And I mean, I would expect the same answer from, a similar answer from the city. You don't see how... from, a similar answer from the city. You don't see how crazy these things are until you actually think, how are we ever going to manage this without just completely removing people's rights and, you know, our kids' rights to an equal education? I don't know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If that's it for 6-2, 6-3, response to the motions. Jackie Dory's motion regarding inclusive curric-, oh, you did one, okay. Ms. Martin? No, you only have one chance to speak. Sorry. You only have one chance to speak. It's okay.
You, okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly appreciate the people who took the time and spoke respectfully to this body, trying to make your, make your opinion known. And I recognize this as a very challenging situation. I'm going to be very clear. What I have to say tonight is my explanation of how I've come to my decisions. I'm not going to waste anyone's time or be disrespectful in any way in disparaging how other people came to their decisions. I don't think it's productive, and it certainly doesn't, it doesn't help us move this forward. But I do feel, you know, as a member of the school committee, I owe the voters and I owe the community as a whole an understanding of how I've come to my decisions, because I think that is what we will be judged on. You know, I will say that I have certainly done my best to stay up to date on, on the research, on hearing and listening and investigating to the best of my ability, using, you know, the media, what I feel are trusted media sources, and taking on the responsibility for these decisions is significant. And I think there are a lot of kind of false equivalencies that get thrown around as we're having these conversations. I'm going to say one that for me, I have found to be instructive, just in terms of a comparison. I don't think there's anyone in this room who's not aware of the responses that we have in place for nut allergies. We have students throughout our community, throughout the world, who have nut allergies that are, you know, in many cases, can be fatal. These are significant challenges that individual children face. It's not the other parents in that classroom's responsibility to keep that child safe. It's not their fault that that child has that, that dangerous situation. It's, it's not their, it may be their constitutional right to eat peanut butter. But the reality is, is that as a school community, as a, as a the overall community, in every situation like that, the school, the classroom, has made the accommodation to keep that one child safe. And, and I absolutely believe that, you know, again, it's, it's other families, other children, other adults having to make a sacrifice. And we can absolutely say that it's a sacrifice. And I see that as an equivalency that, you know, people make these sacrifices for these individual children. I appreciate it certainly, having known some children with, with these, in this kind of circumstance. But who, who wants to be the parent, the family, the individual who's putting that one child in danger? I mean, I don't think anyone wants to be in that circumstance. So, I really do believe, again, grounding my decisions in the information I've been given by what I feel are trusted sources, CDC, Lowell Board of Health, other, you know, information that's come to me that I feel is verifiable and solid, these are the things that have driven my decision. So, understanding the, to the best of my ability, the science, understanding that the responsibility we hold for the children who come into our schools, for their families, and for our community in general, as a whole, that's what's driven my decision. I feel it's in the best interest for our schools, for staff, for kids, for their families. And that's what's driven my decision in supporting this mask mandate. And I think that, again, we are responding to science as it changes. Science changes. That's the nature of science. That's the nature of the scientific method. So, if we come to October 1st and things are, we're in a better situation, and we have better information that, that tells us we can move forward in a different way, we'd be thrilled to support that. But the reality is, is that simply because the scientific kind of recommendations change, it's, it's not a plot. It's the way science has always worked and needs to work. So, I just put that forth again, because I do feel that we owe our community an explanation of how we come to our decisions. And I'm certainly willing to, to answer for that for anyone who has concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. You did speak twice, so just be brief, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Martin, for, you know, speaking on it. And I appreciate your, you know, your decision-making, certainly. I just have, I have a slightly different view on the whole nut allergy thing. Having a brother and my father who both grew up with nut allergies themselves, I don't believe that removing all nuts from schools is the best way to teach our kids. And if you're an educator, I, hopefully, you can put the, you know, the possibility of maybe endangering one of the kids aside, and think about how kids learn. Because, you know, when we were growing up, we didn't have any of these rules about peanuts in classrooms. And my brother and my dad had to, we, we had to make sure they knew to ask any time that they ate something, or, you know, look at labels, or every time we went out to a restaurant, we had to ask. And we had to, we had to be very, very aware of that there might be nuts in foods, and before you put anything in your mouth, you have to know. Removing nuts from the classroom is just, it's not necessarily preparing our kids for the world that they're going to encounter outside of the classroom, you know? And, you know, I mean, a nut allergy is actually a lot more dangerous than COVID is to a child. And so, I think teaching is, you know, is the more important part than just removing the danger for our kids. And so, that's the way that I, I guess I look at that comparison, even though I respect Mrs. Martin's opinion and that thought process. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darney?
I think you just to, I want to be very brief, but to just give my perspective on this. I am a person who hates the masks. I can't breathe, I can't hear, I can't see with them. I'm not wearing it now because it was something that, on a whim. I mean, I'm looking at numbers, I'm looking at the city making the decision that it's not safe, and we need to go back to wearing masks indoors. But, and I want to comment on something that Ms. Martin said. She said, we're responding to science as it evolves. We're learning and we're changing. So, I've been trying, tried to keep myself informed as well, but I'm also looking at the evidence. I'm looking at the evidence of over 600,000 people have died from this disease in this country. I'm looking at the evidence of what's happening in our schools down in the south, where the hospitals are being filled with children getting this disease, this new variant. And I'm thinking that we have an obligation to each other to try to keep as safe as we can. The reason we wear masks is so we can get those numbers down again, because like everyone, I was so relieved when we started to be able to see family again, see my own grown children, that we've only been, saw each other outdoors and at a distance. So, I think that this idea of it is some personal liberty that's been taken. We have a commitment to each other as a community, and we have a precedent of requiring vaccinations. We have vaccinations kids have to get in order to attend school already, right? So, we have a precedent of this shared commitment to each other. And I think that the only way we're going to get this under control is to get more people, more people vaccinated to wear the mask so that we're not continuing to spread it. I really, we saw those numbers go down, and right now, in the state, I believe Lowell is, we're not at the state level in terms of vaccinations. So, for me, I'm looking at the evidence and the increased cases and the fact that more children are getting impacted, and I think this is the safe course forward.
Thank you. Are you all set, Ms. Clark? Mr. Lay, you're all set? Okay. All right. Next section, Ms. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each of the next reports are submitted as, as reports of progress, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, as well as 6-6. Staff is available for questions.
Did you have anything on your motion?
Yes. If we're looking at the Inclusive Curriculum Across Grades Report, I want to say thank you very much. Obviously, there's been a lot of work being done, and it was good to see it in such a concise, but yet substantive format. And there were just a couple of things that I thought really jumped out at me. I was very excited about, and then I had a question too. So, when we talk about, under mathematics, this idea of, you know, notes and supports and extensions for English learners, students with disabilities, students performing above grade, as well as students performing below grade level. Because I think that really, when you look at what is an excellent curriculum, what is an excellent approach to curriculum, it's one that takes each child where they are and brings them to the next level. So, you're not struggling and lost and so far behind you can't make progress, or you're, you're not bored because they're covering some stuff that you already knew and understand. So, that was really good to see, and it looks like there's a lot of really good work being done, especially, I want to talk, I have a couple of questions. Like first, what is TCRWP? What does that stand for?
Ms. Desmond?
Yes. So, that's Columbia Teachers College University's Reading and Writing Program, which we are, we have adopted in Lowell, and we have been implementing for several years now. Our implementation process has been to professionally develop our teachers on units, let those units be rolled out, and then continue the, the following year with some more units, so that we're not just doing a full-blown, everybody switch what you're doing and do something else. We, we roll it out in a very predictable and concise manner.
Great. Well, that actually is a great segue to my other questions, which were regarding the science, K-5 science curriculum, and the social studies K-5 curriculum. One called Mystery Science, and the other one Inquiry Journals also sounded really good. Like, you know, this part about student, empowering students to take ownership of science, of learning things from their own community. My question is, since a while ago, we have not had science as a special at the elementary level. So, are, what are the supports? I'm assuming it's teachers that are teaching these new programs about how to teach science, how to teach social studies. What are the supports that are in place for those K-5 teachers who already have so much on their plate?
Ms. Desmond?
So, just to go back a moment, we have FOS kits, and we've been using those for several years, and those are hands-on, experimental. We still utilize those kits. However, the science standards have changed, and in order to address all of the science standards, we have also incorporated the Mystery Science, which is a very similar way of learning. And so, it has a significant online component as well, and our teachers utilized it quite a lot during remote learning. So, the supports that were provided were provided through our Science and Social Studies Coordinator through PD, online PD, during the year. We've continued that PD, and we will continue that PD this year. But again, this is incorporated with the existing FOS kits. So, it's, it's, it's a supplemental program that helps to support teachers in teaching all of the standards that we need to teach, since the revised standards were released a couple of years ago. And the same with social studies. Our social studies curriculum was not aligned to the state standards because the purchase was made quite a long time ago. So, this Inquiry Journals, again, is a way for us to be able to honor what students bring to the classroom. And we have provided PD to teachers in the spring, and we will continue to provide PD at the start of this school year and support them throughout the year.
Great. Thank you very much. And I want to just, on that social studies note, so I, the, this, the curriculum is aligned with what the state is expecting us to teach, right? But this sentence in, in your, your social studies paragraph about students investigating, investigate inquiry questions by considering multiple perspectives of the same moment in history. I mean, we were doing that at, in freshman college classes, looking at, you know, let's say the, the manifest destiny world. We were destined to go west. That was, you know, and, and what was that like for the women at that time? What was that like for the, the Native Americans who were already there? You know, just, it's, it's very cool. And I, I think it's, it's the right path in terms of what, what we need to do to educate our children to be successful in this world. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, I echo my colleagues' sentiments, and it was great to get this report. You know I'm a bit of a wonk when it comes to this stuff. So, I love when we start getting information on curriculum and the way it's being deployed in our classrooms. I would just say, you know, we're at the beginning of a new school year. I know that some of these are existing programs with Eureka and some of the others, implementing some new ones. I would really love to be able to get some feedback from teachers, from administrators about the rollout. You know, I would certainly recommend that a curriculum subcommittee could be a place to really showcase how these things are being deployed in our schools and what our outcomes, how we feel they're, they're impacting our outcomes. So, I would just say that by way of an invitation, that it would be great to be able to track the success of these, these, the new programs, as well as some of our existing ones, because I think that that's, you know, that's certainly something that, that the committee and the community would benefit from. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on, maybe, maybe Ms. Desmond can answer best, on tracking of students, basically, students learning at different levels, like the, you know, the honors level courses, or, you know, how are we tracking in the district right now? And are we on the middle school and high school level? Has that changed much from how it's been traditionally? Or do we have levels of learning on the middle and high school level?
Ms. Desmond?
So, at the high school level, there are varying, there are varying levels of courses. For example, high honors English, honors English, college-level English. And that's always based on the great, the grades that are earned in the prior year, as to whether you qualify to, to join a class in a particular level, or by teacher's recommendation or guidance council or recommendation.
Sure.
K-8, or pre-K-8, I should say. What we're really looking to do is assess students regularly and look at where each individual student is at, and then meet their needs to move them forward from there. So, it, we are spending more time looking at individual assessments and learning about where kids are and how to move them forward. And that's the goal, as I said, elementary, all the way through to eighth grade. And we assess very regularly. We use a lot of different assessments, such as iReady. We use writing rubrics for the writing programs. The Eureka Math has pre- and, and post-assessments for every unit. The same for our Mystery Science program and our Inquiry Journals. There are assessments at the end of each unit. And so, really, what we want to focus on is providing teachers time to look at those assessments as teams, and really analyze where kids are at, and then be able to provide them whatever it is that they need to be able to move forward. So, that's the strategy for all of our students pre-K-8.
So, that we're no longer on the middle school level, kind of grouping students by, you know, how fast they move through the curriculum, or, no? All right. I mean, that's disappointing to me. And do, can, I guess, can anybody supply a definition of inclusive? Because it seems like we're going into a lot of different categories here, whether like special education or ELA, or, I mean, there's CLSP talk all over here. Is that, are all those, is that what we're talking about when we say inclusive curriculum?
I think they, they all could certainly relate to the term inclusive. Traditionally in education, we use the term... Traditionally in education, when we used the term inclusive, we were often referencing special education inclusion. Now the term is far broader and hence the reason for the comprehensive report.
Mm-hmm. All right. We still haven't really had a conversation on the CLSP, you know, framework. It seems like there's a ton of professional development going on, you know, on it, though. Can I request that, or do I need to make a motion that we have conversation pertaining to it or?
I can, I'll take it on.
Can we talk about that before maybe the next meeting or?
The next meeting's next week, but oh, if you're flexible with that, I'll give you a call.
Well, I've been waiting a long time.
All right. We'll set it.
And we're just going ahead with it, you know? I mean, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? All right. List of, where are we? List of eligible teachers? Any questions on that? And then the personnel report, Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually had several people reach out to me that this, the report is outdated. There are people on here that retired, there are people that are current, you know, I would just ask that we could update the report.
Well, did you see the dates, do you mean, or is that?
The names? Are you talking about the eligible teachers' report?
This is the personnel report for, you're right, you're right. Eligible teachers first.
If I could address that briefly, Mayor. I did inquire about that, Ms. Darney, and I guess the rule on that is we can't legally withdraw someone from the list until they, in writing, request to be taken off the list, but we can do that certainly if people email us and request to be taken off. But you're right, there are people that have retired or don't wish to obtain a job anymore on there, but we'd have to hear from them or we could try to locate them, which is much more difficult.
So somebody on the list that retired like 15 years ago and they're still on the list because we never heard from them?
Oh, yes. I mean, we're legally required to put this list out, which is my requirement, my understanding, and we're not allowed to strike names unless the person asks and there are some complexities with that. For example, if someone passed away, you know, you'd have to technically find an authorized individual to take them off. If I did know about that, I would probably just take them off anyway, but we're not supposed to do that unless requested to take them off. So I'd encourage anyone who wants to be taken off to write into Mr. Jarvis or myself and we'll certainly take them off the list. Can't hear.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. And the other thing is, what if somebody is currently working in the district? Why would they be on that list?
Well, they're still eligible to apply for other positions or to be picked, so that's why they're technically still on the list.
Maybe we should review the rules on the list. It seems very strange.
So, I mean, my understanding is there's got to be corrective legislation filed so that we don't have to produce this any further, but there was a statute at one point passed that required us to maintain this. I personally don't see great value in it, but we're required to produce it.
So any questions on the list of the eligible teachers or personnel? Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I just want to add again, just in terms of the history, because we are indeed like the only district that's required to do this. And it's, it's based on a very, I'm sure, a storied history of inappropriate hires that happened. I mean, we're talking in the 70s. I mean, it was a very long time ago that this was put in place as I understand it. But it really could be worth it to at least ask the question of the city of what we need to do. I believe it's a home rule petition we need to file. So, I mean, this has been going on for many, many years. If we could maybe put it to bed, that, that would be a good thing.
Sure. If I could take this to mean that the committee would like us to investigate that, I'd gladly do that to try to.
I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darney. Take a look at it. Thank you, Dr. Hall. Okay. Motion to accept the reports as 61 through 65 is a report of progress by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Lay. Home Education, Mr. Superintendent?
Same again. We're submitting to you as a report of progress. Any questions? Ms. Desmond is available to answer as our chief academic officer.
Any questions by the committee? Move for approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darney. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mary Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Six shades, one ounce, approved.
New business, consideration of revised job descriptions from Personnel Subcommittee.
Yeah, this was the one, Mr. Mayor, that gives you the option as a committee. This was the new process that the committee put in place where these new jobs go to the subcommittee. So the option here is all of the adjustments and all of the jobs are coming back to you as recommendations from the subcommittee. So 7.1 gives you the opportunity to bundle them and take action on them all as one. The same jobs are listed to you as we traditionally list them one by one. The committee can also choose to do that. If you go 7.2, one by one, then 7.1 would just be accepted as informational and then you would go down to votes. So I'd leave that to the committee. It's all the same information. 7.1 just gives you the opportunity to take one vote as a, as a bundle.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you. Just on the strength and conditioning coach, was it, was the discussion on the CSCS, the certification?
Dr. Hall?
Is that something that wasn't in before that we added during the subcommittee?
I think what was added in, what was added in the subcommittee was it stressed that we wanted more emphasis on all students in the high school being able to take advantage of this assistance. It was the intent of the administration for that to happen, but we didn't have it spelled out very robustly within the judge.
Meaning not just for athletes?
Correct.
Sure.
Whole student body.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, no, it's great. It's, I mean, it's a huge need at the high school for our athletic teams, but also for anybody who, you know, walks down the hall and sees the gym and is looking for an opportunity. And especially with a new facility, you know, a new gym and a new fitness center. The only other thing that I would suggest is we find a quarterly, maybe a quarterly maintenance program for all our new fitness equipment when that comes in, because that is important over time. But this is a great thing for, for all kids at the school, so thank you.
All right. Any questions on any of the positions? No, I know. Ms. Darney?
I just have a quick question on the Director of the Student Resource Center. That, that is the proposed new title, right? What is the Director of Alternative School Education? Was that the old title? Okay. So that is replacing the old title. Got it.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that for me? So the, the Director of the Student Resource Center is replacing what had been the Director of Alternative? Oh, okay.
Just the title change.
All set?
So if I could, sorry, if I could just point that out. Initially, we had that there because it says as per LSAA contract and we didn't switch it out, but it was like that initially because we're just going to sub that into that line in the LSAA contract if it's approved.
And this is different from the Engagement Center? I know I asked that question before.
Ms. Desmond, do you want to? Thank you.
So I believe at the subcommittee, the request was to change the title to Director of Student Resource Center. So the former title was Director of Alternative School Education and it, it, again, was an existing LSAA position. And there was a lot of reference to specifically the Career Center. And so at the subcommittee, we spoke a lot about this job being more responsible for working with students and managing the staff in the new, the newly-created Student Resource Center, which would look to reengage students who have dropped out and develop paths for them to be able to successfully graduate with the high school diploma. So based on the information at the subcommittee, the job, title change happened and so Director of Student Resource Center is now the title for this role. And lots of the specifics that solely referenced the Career Academy were stricken and it, the, the focus of the position is, is more around the Resource Center, grant writing and being able to connect with other entities that already exist within our district to help support bringing back students who've dropped out, who've gone off of our roles and help support them and their families to be able to access whatever it is that they will need to get to the high school, earning the high school diploma.
So basically, I'm using the term Engagement Center, but you're using the Career Student? I guess, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out of these distinct things, is there a Student Resource Center and an Engagement Center and a Career? Okay, so there are three different things.
Yes, so the Engagement Center already exists within the Career Academy.
Okay.
And that program is, is a very specific program where students not only attend classes but also go to work.
But there's really two things then.
So there will be, so the Career Academy is the, the school.
Okay, and the Engagement Center is part of that?
Then Engagement Center is part of that. It's a grant-funded program.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I was conflating two different things. Thank you.
Do you have a question again?
Oh, no, I was just, I thought I made, might have been able to clear up some of that. I knew it was just a language thing. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So I need a motion to bundle 7.2 to 7.6. Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin to bundle 7.2 through 7.6. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mary Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Six shades, one ounce, approved.
And then Communications, motion to accept the Communication, replace it on file, which is the organizational chart. Any questions on that? Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate Dr. Boyd providing us with that background memo and the organizational chart. I would like, however, to be able to discuss this stuff. I have concerns about the changes. I think that we need to relook it, look at it again after two years of implementation. And I would request that we put it on for another meeting when Mr. Dakota can be here and it's not nine o'clock at night.
Okay.
Can we just have it back?
So you want to just take a look at the organizational chart again, you're saying?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
You want to take a look at the organizational chart?
Yeah, and we could, and we can discuss the memo that came with it. Just put it on the agenda for our next meeting, which I guess we're meeting next week.
Yeah, what was the memo? I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't get the memo.
Is there a memo in there?
Yeah, it was the original memo that he sent explaining the different, the changes to the organizational chart. Did you not get it?
There was a memo from me, Mayor, to, to upload the organizational chart with the old memo.
All right. Maybe I didn't see that.
I can forward it to you.
All right. So, yeah, we'll just put it on a later date, at next week's meeting then?
Yeah, and if we can get an update from Dr. Hall about the windows and the screens, just give, just give us a count. What have we got done? You know, what, because they had provided the original list, so we can just go against that and see what has been, what we've been able to get in place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All set. Need a motion adjourned by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Thank you. All those in favor?